I'd first like to start off with Olivia Brady, Council at Large. Valerie Scott Cooper, 3rd District. Heather Lewis, 2nd District. Mr. Hakeem Jones, 4th District. Council President, Council Vice President Derek Curry is not with us this evening, and he is at Large as well as Sue Ann Gardner, who is not here with us this evening. And she too is at Large. So again, if anyone has any questions, now is the time to ask a specific question. Once we get into the format and the flow of the meeting, there will not be an opportunity to do public comments. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
My question has to be, I'm interested in the Hoosier Riverfront Park. Alright, I understand we're getting a grant of some sort to help establish that particular park and help fund the repair.
Yes, that is true.
Okay. Good numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you give me a clarification again? Clarification again, when you said there will be a comment time?
Oh, yes, so right now at this time, you could ask your council representative any specific questions that you may want to ask as we go through the current format of the meeting. It will be an interactive meeting, and again, that would produce live results on screen. So that would not be an opportunity.
So this is not going to be an opportunity at any time, but something might be said that we can ask and question in regards to that? It's all going to be controlled just like a council meeting?
Uh, no, this is definitely not different. This is definitely different than a council meeting, but again, you have time, and we do have, which we do have, council representatives are here to ask questions.
So I gotta get all my questions out right now?
Yes.
Okay, if my questions right now are, I'd like to know whether or not your trip to Birmingham was funded by the taxpayers or out of your own pocket. I can understand paying the fee to the event, but your hotel and everything else, I'd like to know whose dime was that on? That's my first question, and that would go to all of these that went. My second question would be, is has there been any plans made since the contract will be coming up by the end of this year on finding new trash contractors? Since we don't have the ability of having the trash picked up on a regular basis here, and so it's obvious that the contractor that has this contract now is not fulfilling the needs of Narstown, so that's my second question. And I'd like to know, my third question would be, is that being that we have records going back a long time ago stating that our infrastructure is not the best, and that, you know, one of the reasons why code enforcement was designed to give out fines and it would produce enough money to fund its own department, at what point are we going to start evaluating and increasing code? Because it's obvious, just going through the neighborhoods, that since these are a lot of rental properties, it's starting to look like to the homeowner that they get special privileges over what the homeowner gets. Because the minute you have someone from code go down the block, the only people that are scrambling to get on the eight inches of noxious weeds and the painting and repairs are the homeowners, and we're still looking at the dilapidated rental properties that are forcing our real estate to drop. So I'd really like to know at what point is someone aggressively looking at increasing our code enforcement than looking at a budget that you just took all this money out for? And the only person that's getting anything out of it that I'm going to see after all you guys are gone is Crandall Jones. His office is being moved from the first floor to the second floor, and the place is getting redecorated. So I need answers, and I'm hoping I get these tonight, because that's one of the reasons why I'm here. Third is crime, and I mean, that's something that we're all want to know, why is it going on and what efforts are being made? I don't think, you know, Mark has been at every one of these town meetings giving the information, but it's obvious somewhere we're lacking manpower because the crime is still escalating. It's not decreasing regardless of what crime and statistic and CADCOM and all that information. It doesn't make the hell of beans when you're the victim of vandalism and crime. So all these are my questions that I have tonight. I may have some more later on, and I hope that I have the freedom, since this is a town hall meeting, to be able to ask that question without being told to sit down, and it's not part of your program. Because I'm understanding that this is our town, and it's our problems that we should all be working together on it. Thank you.
Totally agree.
Mary Ellen, thank you for your concerns, and thank you for always speaking up on things that are affecting you. I'll start off with Birmingham, okay? Birmingham, Alabama, was a trip where five council members attended for the past two, three days, four nights actually. Council, if you're not aware, council receives 1% of the entire budget for the municipality. Within that, you know, is our small stipend, it's trainings, it's devices, things we need to communicate. So to answer your question, council did send five of us to Birmingham, Alabama, to a conference with national council people and mayors from throughout the country. The location in Birmingham, in my opinion, was one of the best places you could send us. It was one of the most eye-opening experiences, I can say, being in places that had very little resources, very little money, and a heavy history of injustice and discrimination. So the fact that we went there, I can speak for myself, and I'm sure council may agree, one, it was very productive, you know, we had workshops nonstop. On occasion, when the day was over, they had things planned for us, so you may have seen that. But however, doing this job as a council person, living here, being raised here, being born here, you do need, you do need a time where you can get away from this place. You do need a time where you can learn and you can see what other people are doing.
I was going to answer the question, honey. The question was not that.
It was, our taxpayer dollars paid. Our state taxpayer dollars sent five of us to Birmingham.
Yes and no.
And we received a lot, it did, and we received a lot of training, a lot of motivation, and a lot of ideas how we could bring that back to a community like ours, which struggles with some of the similar things that we've seen in Birmingham. So I hope I answered your question well for Birmingham. Does anybody want to chime in on any of the other questions that should be answered?
Thank you for your questions. I didn't go to Birmingham, just simply to, but I had a question regarding, I mean, I had somewhat of an answer regarding the trash situation. At our last council meeting, we did agree to become an affiliate for Keep America Beautiful, as you might be aware, because you're going to be in Birmingham, to redress some of the issues regarding trash and litter in the municipality of Narstown, and that includes looking at the contract. So that, those answers will come up later. I don't have an answer for you at this time for that specific question.
I just want to add a little bit, Mary Ellen, to your question about the trip to Birmingham. The organization is called the National League of Cities, and it was founded, I believe, about 100 years ago or more. It's only been in the last, I'm getting it off the top of my head, the last 20 years or so that they added small cities under 50,000 people. Because they realize that we have the same issues that other cities who are larger capacity residents. So yes, as Sonia Samuels did say, it was funded by taxpayer dollars. However, I don't know, I've been in the corporate world for many, many years before coming on council. They all do training, because if you don't do training, we're going to be lagging behind this moving world. And we were able to be enlightened, not only by the workshops, the workshops were awesome, but I believe the networking was even better. Because we were able to see how small places like Bestinmer, Alabama, was able to get a state-of-the-art playground, recreation center for their children. This is something that since I've been on council, we're talking about. However, one of the things that we learned is how is the best way to go about that. So we learned so much that we are going to sit down with our council president so that we do not do the sunshine law, breaking it off, but we're going to sit down so that we can communicate what I feel, what Heather feels, what Hakeem feels, and what Derek feels, are the top three things that we want to bring back.
What about the other two council members?
Well, they didn't go this time.
Why didn't they go?
There's another meeting.
Why didn't they go?
Well, they chose not to go.
Well, I'm understanding it because it was a black caucus, so where's the fairness? And all our council members are learning the same thing.
Okay, so Mary Ellen, it were not only African-American members.
Well, that's what I wanted to find out. Nobody seems to be answering my question.
You didn't ask the question.
Why didn't the other two go?
They chose not to go. They could have gone.
Okay.
They could have gone.
Thank you.
But the whole idea, I think, is what you're missing, the point is, we're trying to learn so that we can help our city, your city, and my city. We're trying to do the thing that, we don't want to be behind the eight ball. From what I understand, Narstown has been behind the eight ball. We're trying to move Narstown.
This stuff, with all due respect, I get what you're trying to tell me, but I just would like to inform you that the Twin Cities is also a partner, which we used to be, Narstown here, with Harrisburg. So what I'm trying to find out is why it was so special about Birmingham, Alabama versus what's offered out of Harrisburg when the Twin Cities, which is an organization, you heard, it's been out for 100 years, offers through Harrisburg to cut back with spending with our tax dollars? Because we're sitting here, some of us don't get the privilege of our company sending us away. And with a situation like this, when you're utilizing tax dollars, I'm sorry, it should have been out of your pocket for the airfare and hotel, and I would have been willing to pick up the ticket for the event. Because yeah, you are getting something out of the event, but you're not getting anything out of going to Birmingham that you couldn't get out of Harrisburg.
Okay, first of all, Harrisburg, Harrisburg is the Pennsylvania Municipal League. So what they, what we learned from there is about what's happening here. What we learned from the National League of Cities is a national event, so it's larger. We get more information to bring back to try and help our city. Getting back to your question about paying your animal pockets, to be quite honest with you, if I got a salary, I would probably do that.
So just to piggyback on what Valerie was speaking to, not only is it the National League and the caliber of the training is exemplary higher than just what we're learning here in Pennsylvania, but we're also able to hear about other laws in other cities that are happening that we can bring back here, mainly workforce development. When I went to the National League of Cities in Washington a few months ago, I got a chance to hear about it, and brought it back, and we started having conversations, how we could have the $10 million of development that Montgomery County is going to be doing right here in our downtown that none of us, none of our residents are going to be able to benefit from, because we don't have anything in place to make them choose our city and our residents to use as labor force. So that's what we're learning when we go to Birmingham, or when we go to Washington DC, and when we talk to other people outside of Pennsylvania. That's what we get to bring back here. Secondly, you had another question, oh, what you were talking about, I don't know how you, about the riverfront. The riverfront's in my district. Cleaning up and making sure that the riverfront is beautiful and a destination that we want people to come to is absolutely at the forefront of my mind and what we want to have happen. We had conversations with Mascaro about trash and things like that. They're on notice that their contract is being reviewed because of their performance.
By the way, Olivia can attest to the fact that they did not pick up recyclables in this neighborhood until today.
And they're still, they're under notice. So, you know what I mean, just like on your job, you don't get fired as they want, okay? You're on notice, you get an opportunity to get better, you're getting better, you're getting better, you're getting better. So that's the process. It's no different than, you know what I mean, we're a city, we have a process to go through. It's no different than you on your job or how you conduct your business with anybody else. It doesn't happen overnight, but you're held to the fire like we're magicians and things are just supposed to happen. So, yes, we are council, but we're humans. We're human. So our relationships, so in your, in your, in your job, in your job, when you go to work and something's not happening, there's a process that you go, it's no different than council. We're not magicians. We can't say, okay, well, you got to pick up this trash, and it's picked up tomorrow. We understand, we're dealing with other human beings, so.
Just if you can, when I worked in the City General School, because I was supposed to go to Harrisburg or wherever or something, I didn't have to pay one penny to go, no matter what it was, I had to stay overnight, but if it had to do with business, that's fine. If it was a personal agenda, that's different. It's all fair and fair.
Yeah, we have a personal agenda.
For instance, people bring things to you. Don't take it personal if we're asking you questions. It's your job to respond to us.
Absolutely, it's not a personal thing, but you have to understand that there's a process. That's, I'm not, it's not a personal thing. It's a little frustrating when people forget that there's a process. So it's not as personal when you're expecting me to know what's supposed to happen tomorrow. Yeah, no, we're going, every day we work to get better, but recognizing that there's a process. You tell me something today, you're expecting results tomorrow.
Honey, we've been talking about trash for two years, so I don't really care. But the contract gets renewed every January. I've been talking about trash for two years.
They're on notice.
So I'm going to chime in about the Mascaro situation. There were many pictures that went out publicly, and it showed how bad the Portobello alleyways were. They went directly to Mascaro. They, they seen the alleys, and they weren't happy with it, and our municipality shortly after that met with Mascaro. They are aware that, you know, they're not the only trash hoarder in the area, and they are aware that they have to improve, you know, if they expect to obtain another contract.
Well, can you let public works know Washington Street is a new dumping area because there's furniture and tires?
And we will. To touch on code enforcement, if you don't mind, we, we had a report on our code department at our last council meeting, and I can personally say our code has produced double than what they've done over the years. They have flex hours, they are now working daytime, they're working evening hours. They have added staff to the crew. They have technology, and they have, they have open communication to anybody who calls regarding code issues. If I'm a council person and I'm contacted regarding a code issue, I either go to my code director or I go to Mr. Jones. And I can say, majority of my situations have been handled, they've been, they've been looked into. Contacting lawyers, finding out who owns a house if they're in New York City or somewhere in another state, that can be challenging at times, so that's also a process. If Mr. Simons finds a resident or he finds a landlord, chances are that has to go through a process as well. Before he gets to court, it's already three weeks. The grass is already four or five inches higher. So just like Heather said, things do take process. When we get complaints, when I get complaints, we, we do our best to get them to the right people so that you guys, you know, are satisfied. But I've seen major improvements in the area of code. And there's many other areas, we're trying to get our landlords engaged, we're trying to hold our landlords accountable.
Aren't the landlords supposed to have a contact office in Narstown according to your ordinances that passed? About a year ago, a year and a half ago, you passed something where anybody wanted to have an apartment rental property in Narstown had to have an office.
So Mary Ellen, with respect to the time and this forum, we'll be here, I'll stay here as long as you need to answer the question and talk to your buddy.
What I was just saying is, that's what are your ordinances?
That is something that I will talk to you about.
Why, these people need to hear it too.
Ask your question one more time, please.
Do we have an ordinance that requires anybody that wants to rent their property out to have to have an office building to handle the building in Narstown? I'm not faking up this, I know that I heard this as an ordinance that was passed or resolution two years ago, that anybody that wanted to have a rental property in Narstown had to have a property manager here in town, correct?
Okay, we do have an ordinance for that, and I hope, get with my colleagues.
So Amber, for these years, why are we still looking for people to do work?
I will get with our colleagues before this night's over and get you some information on that.
I have a comment on the riverfront park.
I'm sorry, at this time, we are concluding the Q and A. Yes, we are. So at this point, we will like to get started.
Again, you're controlling the many of you again. I hope this was a town hall.
With the first series of the listening tours that council has. The second council tour that we had will be code enforcement, followed by economic development, and then lastly, community relations. Tonight is an opportunity for the residents and constituents to share their thoughts and their feedbacks in regards to how we proceed with public safety and provide some insights for our 2018 budget.
I'm very sorry.
So with that being said, I will turn it over to Council and Jones.
We didn't come to watch the movie, you said it was a listening tour, a listening tour. Who's supposed to listen after you?
You have more questions?
What about public safety? That's why we're here tonight.
How about the latest news?
I can't, I'm busy here, not for a presentation.
You know what, if you don't want to watch the movie, I'd suggest you leave, because they're not going to answer your question. It's just like a council meeting.
Folks, let me, let me share, hello, my name is Frandl Jones. We're not about to show a movie. What this is, is actually an opportunity for municipal council to get input from residents as they get ready to go into budget session, as they get ready to start discussing their work plan for 2018. There's a series of meetings, this first one is about public safety, and it is to capture your information about public safety. The way council wanted to approach this was to use some technology that we've come across that actually captures everybody's input, so that it's not one or two people's input that they are using to make the budget decisions and the policy decisions that they have to make. So we provided two opportunities, a few opportunities. One, the first part of this was an opportunity to face-to-face have conversation with the council. The second opportunity is to go through this process of a series of questions and respond to those questions so that we can get your input, and we'll capture that input, I'll tell you how in a minute. Capture that input. That information is automatically going to be downloaded, analyzed, provided to council so that they can go back and get everybody's input on how they feel about some aspects of public safety, knowing that they're going to have to look at things like resources, budget allocation, manning, staffing, whatever. And there are going to be questions that allow you to do that. There's also going to be a question, a question at the end of this that allows you to put other questions that you might have into the system so that we'll know what, and council will know, what residents are thinking about as they go forward for future sessions like this, and also for just future, future regular meetings. And then after we go through this process, there'll be time afterwards to talk to council again about any questions or concerns that you want to address with them. So what we have is, is a piece of technology called Mentimeter. As you know, we, when we advertise this, we ask everybody to bring your smartphones with you, so if you.
I have, some of us have.
Exactly. And so for those of you who don't have a smartphone, we actually have the printed surveys back in the back that we are more than happy to provide to you because we're going to capture that information as well. We want to capture information from everybody. So there, so with that, oh, I'm sorry, with, with that, what we want to do is, first of all, for those of you who do have smartphones, you can pull them out, and we, and we provided a sheet of paper, but if you didn't get it, if you can go to your web browser and go to www.menti.com, that's www.menti.com, here's the wifi for this building, so it won't cost you if you want to, if you want to utilize this wifi for this building, so it does not cost you to, to get to the wifi. Now, once you've got that wifi, connected to that wifi, what we will do is then go to www.menti.com. So I'll give you a couple of minutes to connect to that.
Mr. Jones, why did we not start out by addressing public safety and ask the questions about public safety?
This, this, again, one of the purposes of this was to get some public safety information from you through this series of questions. You also will have the opportunity to talk to the police, to talk to me, to talk to council, to talk to chief about any public safety issue or concern you have. You do have that opportunity to do it.
We need to put in a working agreement between council, residents, police, and businesses so that everybody knows what's going on up there, and there won't be so many murders, there won't be bank crimes and things like that, because there'll be a real town watch in West End, Anthony East End walking around, making sure that we have your ears to be able to tell you if something's wrong.
Understood. And, and so sharing that information with any of us, just yet publicly, we got to capture. We, we understand that's one of the things that's on your mind about what we should do. Lots of folks have lots of things on their mind, we want to capture all of that. And generally, when you have one and a half hour typically, town hall meeting, you don't get to capture everybody's because a few people talk, and some people don't get to. So council wanted to give everybody a chance to have input. So now, once you've got the wifi, if you use, go to www.menti.com, and then enter that code to be able to answer on your smartphone, to be able to answer the survey on the smartphone. And one of the things about this is, you'll see the results of the answers live on the, on the screen as they happen.
Can you put the M-Cord password back on? Sure.
PA55.
And P10.
Please, it's going for.
Yes, code 4. It's a, it's short for number 4. It's MC, it's a lot. Yes, hello. Yes, it's a lot. Oh, no.
All right, so if everybody has the code, we're going to do a couple of test questions so that you can see how, how it works. The first test question is, what neighborhood do you currently live? And just type in your neighborhood that you currently live.
Street, hood, street?
Yes, yes. If there's a neighborhood name or if there's a street name, type it in. Oh, one of the things I just, you don't need to change the page on, on your screen, it'll auto, it'll automatically change as we go through the survey, so you don't, you don't need to do that. So just, and just as a point of information, is, is this kind of capturing that now council will know, leaving this meeting, what neighborhoods were represented in the meeting from both from the folks who input it on the screen and the folks who are going to turn in surveys. We're going to use, they're going to use that data to start talking about, as you look at what's concerning you, they can target it to a particular area. So that, that's one of the reasons we wanted to try this technology out with residents. So second, is that all? Second test question is, what did you expect from this event? All right, so those are the, those are the two test questions, and that gives you an idea of how this, how this thing is going to work. What I'll do now is turn it over to the president of council, and she's going to actually lead you through some of the policy questions that have been put together to get your responses. And again, they're going to use this information for some decision-making. We're going to do that again with the codes ones, we're going to do a, do a, a third one as, as well, to get information from you. And again, in future meetings as we get together, that time before we get to this time is your time to ask council any questions about any concerns you have about your particular neighborhood, your street, the town in general, what we're doing, whatever. And you will also have time to do that after the meeting as well. But we want to make sure again that. But we want to make sure again that at this meeting, we walk away with real data that the residents have given us.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And before I forget, I would like to recognize Hank Sisco, the ambassador of Narsetown. So our first question is, public safety satisfaction. How satisfied are you with the Narsetown Police? And then also, how satisfied are you with the Narsetown Fire Department? So it looks like a few folks are still tabulating. So I'll give you a few more seconds to respond. Second question, what is the most pressing public safety issue to you? And here would be your opportunity to type in what your response would be. So we have a few of the crime, shootings, speeding, violence, and guns. We also see code enforcement on supervised kids. So again, all of these responses will be captured as true data for staff and council to work on. Third question, narrowing your concerns, which three issues below are most pressing to you? Have either community relations, crime prevention prevention, education, or perception that Narsetown is unsafe? Fairness, equity, and public safety? Fourth question, what would you say our police department is doing well? See if we more responses are being tabulated. Our fifth question, what would you say our fire department is doing well? I like the education piece there. Our sixth question, what would you say our police department is not doing well? Our seventh question, what would you say our fire department is not doing well? Safety in Narsetown. Fire prevention response. Do you have workman smoke detectors in your home? Do you have carbon monoxide detectors in your home? Do you have fire or insurance for your home? Do you have a fire escape plan for your home? Question number nine, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? What do you think are the greatest problems in your neighborhood? We have burglars, robberies, disorderly conduct, gun violence, assault, homelessness, vandalism, graffiti, traffic issues, hate crimes, and gang and drug activity. To what extent have your feelings of safety changed in the past three years? I feel less safe, slightly less safe. Feelings are the same, slightly more safe. Lastly, I feel more safe. In your opinion, what is the most unsafe neighborhood in Narsetown? Procedural justice is next. Question 13, would you agree with the following statements? Narsetown PD treats people fairly with dignity and respect. Narsetown Fire treats people fairly with dignity and respect. Question 14, to what extent do you trust the Narsetown Police? Do you feel comfortable sharing information about a crime with the Narsetown Police Department? Some of the categories are uncomfortable, slightly uncomfortable, neither, somewhat comfortable, and comparable. What could we do to help you feel more comfortable enough to share information? Now we're moving on to public safety resources. What do you think is needed to improve public safety? Some of our options are more patrols, more resources, more new equipment, and/or more personnel. How can we attract more volunteer firefighters? Moving on to community engagement. In your opinion, how well does our police department develop community relationships? How well does our fire department develop community relationships? Are you signed up for any and/or all of the following apps? Narsetown mobile app, ReadyMonCo. What is the best way to communicate information to you? Email, municipal website, regular mail, paper flyers, handouts, social media, Narsetown app, or ReadyMonCo? Have you taken part in any of the following public safety programs? Citizen Police Academy, Leadership Academy, Junior Firefighters Program, Fire Safety House? Or no, but I want to participate? What additional public safety programs or training would you like offered? What comments, suggestions, or questions do you have on public safety? So it looks like staff and council has some work to do in regards to the questions and suggestions that were provided. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Talbot up. Earlier, before we opened the floor up, we mentioned that we weren't accepting public comments. And that was just to get through this phase of the survey. And then again, we do have the input of where you can ask questions. So now I'd like for Chief Talbot to explain what's going on in the community and how he plans on policing Narsetown.
Thank you, thank you everyone. So as everybody knows, we've had a bit of a spike in violent crime lately. And so I've been doing this for a long time. Violent crime in urban America works the same no matter where you go. A couple of things I think are important about violent crime in urban America. Almost 100% of the time, if you get shot in a place like Narsetown, or Pottstown, or Redding, or Lancaster, or Philadelphia, do you think you get shot by a stranger? Do you think that's how it works? Like, we don't have a, we can't put this on the screen, but I promise you, if you get shot in a place in urban America, 90-plus percent of the time, you're going to get shot by somebody who you know very well. Another thing that you see in urban America is that when a shooting happens, we have a significant challenge in arresting people for shootings. Why do you think that is? Anybody have any idea? Well, there are almost always witnesses, but you rarely have somebody who wants to tell the story about what happened. I don't know about you, but if, God forbid I ever get shot, I promise you I'm telling on you. Like, if you shoot me, I'm going to tell on you. There's no question about it. But what we struggle with in Narsetown and every urban community has this problem, nearly everyone. People who get shot are often involved in what? They're often involved in other crimes, right? That crime tends to concentrate itself in certain neighborhoods, within certain groups, among people who know each other well. I don't say any of this to say that means it's excusable in Narsetown. I say it to say, sometimes you hear stories about what happens in some communities, and we make it that it's a community problem, as if there's something pathological going on here that's not going on in other places. You know who commits crimes? You know who commits violent crimes? It's not a hard question. Who do you think commits violent crimes? Criminals commit violent crimes. Neighborhoods don't commit crimes. Right? And in fact, the people that, I fully recognize that I'm speaking to the choir here, because the people that I wish I were talking to are the people that would never show up for a meeting like this. So, you know, the sort of tragedy in my mind of a meeting like this that devolves into we're yelling at each other, is anybody doubt that we're all here trying to accomplish the same thing? Right? We're all here, like, I am not here because I wanted the free sandwiches over here. We're all here for the same thing. So what I've been doing in Narsetown for three and a half, for almost four years, is what works in urban America. I'll challenge anybody who wants to take the time to look and see what works in policing, to find something that works that we're not doing here. So, you know, it would take me a really long time to explain the extent of what we're doing to make Narsetown safe. But I'll capture it in what I feel like are the highlights. Because every single neighborhood is not equal, right? Meaning that in some neighborhoods, crime is very likely to occur. There are some conditions in place that are conducive to crimes occurring, while we're spending more time there than we're spending in other places. Some of the feedback on the screen was, "We need to see you more," right? Because it makes us feel good to see the police. But really, what we're looking for, when we say we want to see the police, really what you're looking for is safety. Right? You want your neighborhood to be safe and as a proxy for feeling safe, we say, "I'd like to see a police car driving around." What we're doing is making sure that the police officers are in the neighborhoods where the violent activities are occurring. So we don't make this optional. We make it a part of our strategy. If bad things are happening in the neighborhoods, I mean, I attended one of our recent CompStat meetings. Our strategy is one in which we don't compromise about what we're going to do. If there's trouble in the neighborhood, if there are problems that are conducive to crimes occurring, we're going to be there and we're going to be out of the cars. There's no question about that. Sometimes, if you live in a safe neighborhood, and here's the reality, if you're here right now, there's probably some things going on in your neighborhood. It's highly unlikely you're experiencing some of the violent crimes that maybe you've heard about. Because those crimes are concentrated in particular blocks, and it's even more concentrated than that. It's in certain parts of the block, right? If you spend any time in urban America, you know that this end of the block can be the good end, right? Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
And that end of the block, like, I don't even go down there, right? It's people that I'm not, I don't talk to the people down there. We treat the other end of the block, or a block away, or two blocks away, as if it's a different community. It's not. It's the same community. But it's this sort of implicit acknowledgement that crime concentrates itself in certain neighborhoods with certain people. We're spending a lot of time in those neighborhoods. We map all of our crimes. In fact, if you're curious about the crimes that occur in Narsetown, you can go on crimemapping.com and you can look at everything that happens. We're completely transparent. Captain and I were extremely pleased to see that we've built a tremendous amount of trust in Narsetown, right? And it doesn't mean that you feel like you're 1,000% safe when you go out into the community. But one of the things that any police department needs in terms of, if you're going to be willing to give us information, if you're going to be willing to partner with us, we've got to be a legitimate presence in the community. I think I've met every single person in this room before. I think I've seen everybody. And I think that the fact that I've met everybody, and the captain here has met everybody, is emblematic of, "We're out in the neighborhoods." I'm not a stranger. Our strategy is about engaging effectively in the community. It's about knowing what's going on. It's about building the town watch. A lot of people want to see town watch, right? We've just had a few trainings, a few town watch trainings. I see some familiar faces with our citizens' police academy. We're doing that. We're doing the coffee, right? We didn't put all the stuff that we do. I think we would have gotten better numbers. I don't know who made this survey, but we're doing more stuff. We're doing, right? We'll have coffee with you. We'll have water ice with you. Right? We might get some ice cream. I don't know. But we can get you to come out of the house, engage with us. We're going to do it. The strategy is about the evidence-based tactics and larger approaches to policing that make communities safe. So when I started as police chief in November of 2013, it seems like just a world away. From that point to now, we've reduced violent crime about 45%. Objectively, if you don't feel safer, it's because of the way you feel about the neighborhood. It's not because crime is going on in that area at the time. Because it's significantly safer now than it was in 2013. Here's what, here's what sometimes, you know, maybe even you, you're too polite to say this back to me. Well, you're hiding stuff in Narsetown, right? You don't report the things that we, we hear things like that trickling out of different corners. There is nobody that does policing more transparent than we do. You can come to our CompStat meeting, right? You can imagine going to your job, sitting down with your boss, talking about your performance, and having a crowd of people around, right? That gives you a belly laugh because it wouldn't happen at your job. But it happens in our police department. We put our business out there. I will ask the hard questions no matter who's around. Because if, right, and here's my thought. If you're paid good money to save people's lives, you can take a hard question. All right, that's what I think. You can take a hard question. You can come to our CompStat meetings. You can go on the internet. You can find out every crime that's reported in Narsetown. We report all these things. It's all pushed out into the community. We make our, and it's not just me, right? All of the police officers at one point or another are open at some public forum so you can have the opportunity to engage. I think it's, and it makes perfect sense to challenge and ask questions about what's happening in the community, right? I'm good with it. I'm good with showing up with a bullhorn, right? You want to be loud, whatever, be loud. But ask a question that makes a difference. Ask about, what are we doing? We're doing these things that are evidence-based. We're out here and we're dealing with the crimes. Let me tell you specifically about what's happened this year in Narsetown. And by the way, I don't know if you're looking at the news. But it's not, it's not, right, things aren't different here than they are in other communities, other than it's significantly safer here than it was several years ago. That's the primary difference about Narsetown, Pennsylvania. But we've had 10 people struck with a bullet so far in 2017. I'm not going to go over each and every case, but let me tell you this. Vast majority of the people involved, and I don't want to say anything that even sounds to be disparaging to a victim. But the vast majority of the people, do you think that they were people that were unknown to us? No. No, and it's not like I know you. Not that kind of "no," right? It's a different kind of "no," right? It's the kind that, it's not merely as friendly. So vast majority of people were involved in some sort of criminal activity, if you can believe that. Vast majority of people that were shot did not tell a coherent story about why they were shot, where they were shot, these circumstances. Because as you've already illuminated, they don't want to talk to the police. Very often, they're living the life that they choose to live. You know, not that it diminishes our challenge, because I don't want anybody to be shot. I don't care what you're involved in, right? Sometimes, our biggest challenge is saving people from themselves. Because you can live a life that's conducive to getting yourself shot, and I promise you, none of you are. You're just not. The vast majority of people that were involved in these shootings drove themselves to the hospital, or somebody else drove them to the hospital, right? There's a clue for you right there, right? Are you getting, did you forget my phone number? Did you, right, it's 911. It's not that hard to remember. It occurs this way for a reason. Again, not to minimize the problem because I consider it enormous, right? I swore an oath to make sure that I do everything I can to make it better. And no matter what your circumstances are, no matter what reasons you have for getting yourself involved in activity that leads to gunfire, I'm trying to save your life. That's what we do. But let's not mistake how we live our lives, people that show up for community meetings. Let's not mistake how we live our lives as opposed to how some people live their lives in some parts of the community, right? So the challenge for all of us is going to be, how can I continue to live the life that I want to live and still engage with the police department, engage with other human beings in a way that makes the neighborhood safe, with that reality in mind, right? It's still all of our challenges, but it's one I think that's important to recognize that it's not some kind of, Narsetown is going crazy. Here's, and I'm going to gently travel in the ground that I traveled at the last council meeting. And I think it's important to make this point. So there was a relatively notorious multiple homicide incident in a community not too far away from us recently. You know what I'm talking about? Does anybody not know what I'm talking about? Just shoot your head if you know what I'm talking about. So there's a relatively notorious case of multiple people getting killed. Does anybody know, and just think to yourself, does anybody know what town the murders happened in? Think to yourself. So, no, you don't know, right? You don't know. Because in some communities, when bad things happen, we say, "A bad person did it," right? That's what we say. We say, "A bad person did it." What are we saying in Narsetown? We're saying Narsetown's bad, aren't we? Why do we do that to ourselves? You didn't shoot nobody, right? Or did you? You didn't shoot anybody. Why do we do that to ourselves? Right? You don't even know what town it occurred in. But when it occurs in a place like Narsetown, for some reason, we embrace it as, "There's something wrong with us." There's nothing wrong with Narsetown, right? People are mad at council because they want to train. Really? That's the same attitude of, are you, are we going to fight against ourselves for a problem that's being brought to us by other people in the community? Right? There's a way to deal with this problem and we're dealing with it, right? There's stuff you can call us on in the police department. We're up to the challenge, right? If you see these behaviors escalating, if you see the same people involved over and over again, if you see the same neighborhoods impacted by this gun violence and we're not there, call us on it. But you're not seeing that, and you're never going to see it here. You're never going to see it. You might find that in other places, but I promise you, we're doing what we need to do to make this community safe. And you're doing your part too. Because really, the challenge is one in which we've got to engage with you in an effective way. So in these neighborhoods where the crimes are concentrated, it's not that, and think about this, because it works this way everywhere. It's not that there are too many bad people out in those neighborhoods. That's not it. What do you think it is? Guess who's not out? Guess who's not out?
The good people.
The good people are not out in these neighborhoods, right? The challenge becomes not letting that small percentage of the population change the character and the quality of life in a place like Narsetown. But then, right, the other piece of it is, let's not act like it's a community that shoots somebody. Let's not act like it's the West End, right? It's a small group of people and we're on. Here's the last thing. I'll close on this. Nearly everybody involved is not available to talk to, right? Nearly everybody involved is locked up for one thing or another. Most of them are not locked up for shooting anybody because, as we pointed out, nobody wants to talk to us about it, right? Or when they do talk, the things that come out of their mouth do not even remotely resemble the truth, right? Don't even remotely resemble the truth. Vast majority of the people involved are not around right now. I'm not a police chief. Our strategy is not one in which we feel like we want to arrest everybody. In fact, we've spent way too many years arresting far too many people in United States of America, but there's still some people left that need to be locked up, right? And we're looking for those people. And we put our hands on the people that have driven this spike in violence that we've experienced lately. And we put our hands on the people that have driven the spike in violence that we've experienced lately. Thank you very much.
So I would like to take this opportunity, I forgot to recognize District Attorney Kevin Steele is here as well. So I would like to thank everyone for coming and to taking a vested interest in Narstown. I hope you're here to share some solutions and ideas, and hopefully, we can get some additional volunteers for the many committees that we have and for many openings that we do have. And to end this with, it takes you in the community to come out to provide solutions, resolutions, to provide feedback, your thoughts and your concern. So at this time, we will have staff that will be available for any additional questions that you may have. And we will also have council representatives hanging around for a few minutes to answer questions that you did not get answered earlier this evening. And again, thank you.